That was a quick introduction. Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of, and I, we were seeing as I was distracted, I apologize, it is December 11th.
11th.
I have help from the audience, it's always appreciated. My name is Jim Lehan, to my left is Mr. Calcutt, to his left is Susan Jacobson. Mr. Palumbo has been unfortunately inadvertently delayed. Hopefully, nothing too treacherous. I'm not sure exactly what time he may or may not arrive, but we will begin the meeting. I want to remind everybody that this meeting is being both audio and videotaped and may be found on Norfolk Cable in compliance with Norfolk, with the state open meeting laws. If you would stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this is our first meeting without Mr. Hathaway.
It is.
I think, so we'll have to read the agenda ourselves. Senator Roche, our new state senator, was to join us at seven o'clock. She has not arrived yet, so we have Mr. Kennedy on the agenda this evening, we have the report of the warrants, we have a number of licenses to consider, we have discussion items of town meeting recap, screening committee update, identify finalist interview dates, and acceptance of minutes. Mr. Kennedy, if you don't mind, you're here and we're grateful. You can stay right there and be comfortable, but you have volunteered to be on A Moment of Insanity, you volunteered to be on our town study committee, and I've seen your resume, and Kevin, we've had a chance to chat, he's the neighbor of a friends of mine, so...
Oh, very nice.
Nice to have you with us. As I said, anyone that's gone nine years on a Board of Selectmen, well, bless you.
It was a run.
Do you have any questions?
Sure.
Mr. Kennedy?
If you'd like to say a little bit about yourself and your experience and what you'll be bringing to the table to the committee?
Sure, yeah. My wife and I just recently moved to Norfolk in September of this year, and we came from Stonem, Massachusetts, and in Stonem, I was quite active in local activities. As Jim mentioned, I was on the Board of Selectmen actually for three terms, nine years. When I didn't make it on my fourth try, I decided to go on the Board of Assessors, so I was on the Board of Assessors for nine years, right up until coming to Norfolk, so...I find that it's, it's good to give back to the community, it really is, and that when you live in a community, you want it to be the best that it can be, and there are times when you can come up with some good ideas to help the community, so...I attended your special town meeting in, last month, and Jonathan Smith, I think his name was?
He's the chair of the committee.
Yeah, that there are a couple of openings on this town government study committee, so that's why I'm here, I was interested in joining that committee.
We really appreciate it, thank you.
Right, you're welcome.
We're very grateful. Is there anything we can tell you about it? Any questions you might have?
Anthony actually printed out for me a mission statement, so I'm sure where it's relatively, it's a new committee, right?
Yes, yep.
I'm sure it will evolve over time, but I, I get the idea that you just wanna, it's like a checkup, right? You wanna look and see what you can do better in the town, and what works, what doesn't work so well, and so I was thinking that maybe with the number of years that I have, that maybe I can throw in a couple of ideas along the way.
I think it's great that you have experience from another town.
Right.
That can only help.
We had five members on the Board of Selectmen instead of three, so that was especially challenging at times, but...
One of our neighboring towns has five members, the other ones all seem to have three, and it seems that the five-member one always has a tad more difficulty than the three.
It can be challenging, yeah, 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 to get the majority vote there, but, yeah, no, I'm, I'm here and I'm happy to serve if you decide that I'm the guy, so...
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much.
I have a motion.
So, I guess I move to appoint Anthony Kennedy to the Town Government Study Committee.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're in trouble now. Thank you very much for volunteering, and welcome to Norfolk.
Thank you.
And again, my best to Ginny.
Yeah, I will.
Why don't we hit the warrants while we're at it?
Oh, you.
Oh, they are all mine, aren't they? Okay. I move to approve the warrant of November 27th and the amount of $215,038, and I don't know how you can have .211 cents, but that must be...
We're getting very precise.
A new way of, a new way of calculating.
That is very precise.
All right. I move to, and I move to approve the warrant of December 4th, 2018, the amount of $859,944.31.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have to ask the finance director how he's coming up with one one-hundredth of a penny.
He might tell you it was somebody else.
I'm sure. I'm sure. We have one other gentleman that is, is it on this agenda?
No, that's the next one.
No, it's gonna be next one, okay, we'll deal with it then. We still do not have our senator, I guess, although I heard some chaos in the hall. I hate to get into these licenses and have to stop.
Yeah.
Well, we can do this, let's move down to the last item and please consider releasing executive session minutes dated...
Yeah.
Oh, terrific, okay, we'll hold off. Must be going through the welcoming committee in the hall.
Oh, yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You had a reception committee in the hall.
Yes, thank you, everyone, I'm so sorry I'm late, I got a little confused where the door was locked downstairs.
Oh, no worries whatsoever.
Hi, welcome, Senator, from Lehan.
Hi, thank you so much, nice to meet you.
Pleased to have you.
Kevin Calcutt, nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Susan Jacobson.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Sue Jacobson.
Nice to meet you.
Our third member of the board is not, please, join us at the table, our third member unfortunately is, we think he's tied up in an accident on Route 9, we're not too sure, but not in it, I think.
Well, that's good.
But anyway, but welcome and congratulations, by the way.
Thank you very much.
From the great city of Natick?
Needham.
Needham, oh, wow, how did I miss that up?
My hometown.
Oh, fantastic, which part?
Both up in the center and in the heights.
Oh, great, that's, I live in the heights.
Do you?
Yep, it's a great place.
Well, I'm not from there, but we, our first home was there when we got married, but anyway...
Oh, wonderful.
We're on Central Ave.
Me too, on Central Ave.
You in my old home?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Pretty sure, but that would be a funny coincidence, wouldn't it?
I would be quite surprised.
Yeah.
Seeing as this goes way back.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's great to be here, thank you so much for having me.
Nice to have you.
You know, it's wonderful to, to meet all of you and, and to see many familiar faces and, and also some new faces.
So, tell us, what's going on for your first week and a half on the job, or two weeks on the job?
Technically, I'm not on the job yet.
That's true, that's true.
So, I'll be sworn in on January 2nd. We are all ready hard at work, we pretty much never stopped working, we just kept going right after the campaign ended, we got right to work, you know, making sure that we had connections with local folks and, you know, working to build the bonds that make for good legislation, so we are, I am in particular already, my staff is also up and running, but we are, you know, hard, hard at work on the issues we talked about all throughout the campaign, transparency and voting and education reform and transportation, healthcare, all sorts of really important things that hope, that I hope will, you know, lay a stronger and better foundation for folks to live happy, healthy lives.
If you could pick one, which one is your favorite crusade?
My favorite crusade? That's a tough question. I, I would say I'm, I'm focused, I would say, right now, you know, we have a, a bill filing deadline on the third Friday of the month at five o'clock, so at the moment, I am hard at work on voting in particular and transparency in particular. It's really twofold at the moment, not because I'm not also working on healthcare and education and transportation and opioids and all sorts of other thing, the environment, but because a lot of the work that needs to be done in those spaces is much bigger than a bill that I could file in 12 days.
Well, you're not gonna have any shortage of issues, for sure.
That's true, there, you know, and that's one of the things I really love about this district is that there really isn't an issue that comes up to Beacon Hill that doesn't touch directly some part of this district, if not all of this district, and, and that's, that's really something.
Kevin?
Where do we fall on the list of towns that you've connected to so far?
First, right, first.
This is my second selectmen's meeting, sorry. Natick beat you to the punch, but I think you guys were on the calendar first, if that counts for something, so, you know, I, I mean, I have 12 municipalities and I intend to represent each and every one of them as to the best of my ability and the best of my staff's ability, you know, each town and one city is unique, and one of the things I really loved about my campaign over the last year was that I discovered a lot of commonality in, in need, right? Every municipality in this district needs more money for public education, every single one of them, we must do education reform. Every single municipality here is really concerned about public transportation and making sure that public transportation is both efficient and effective and, and cost-effective, which it is not much of the time, especially for a town like Norfolk, and is also a bit greener and, and does more to protect our environment, not only by running more efficiently and effectively and in a time of, you know, timely kind of schedule such that people can actually rely on it, but also in the nature of the vehicles that we use and making sure that we are, you know, have young kids, I'd like them to be able to breathe in 50 years, right, as with...
Very important.
Yeah, really important.
Not just for young kids, we're still hanging in there too.
Right, right, exactly.
Well, that did sound very good.
You know, all, all the kids, you know.
I, I'd like to just put in a little bit of a pitch for King Philip.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there aren't a lot of regional systems in the state, I think 11 or 12 regional systems.
True.
The state has consistently underfunded regional systems.
Indeed.
And I know you know this, I'm sure you know.
I am aware.
And in circuit breaker, which normally they should be getting 75 to 80 percent, they've been getting 40 and 50 percent.
Yep.
That's critical money to them, and as you know, it goes to special ed.
Yep.
So, any efforts you can make can help at the regional level, because they are very much like an independent town.
Absolutely.
And they, they get one number, they don't get a chance to move it around or anything like that, and that circuit breaker, lack of funding, has been really hurting regional systems for some time now.
Mm-hmm.
And I know this, you know, a dollar can only be cut so many ways, we all understand that.
Well, that's true.
We all, we all understand that.
No, there's, there's some real work to be done, you know, regional busing also is a, you know, a big problem, and we have a lot of, as I said, we have a lot of education work, reform, you know, reform work to do.
Well, obviously, anything, I guess my priority would be to say anything you can do to help us get more revenue is always a good thing, whether it's Chapter 90 or local state aid or whatever, you know, 'cause...
Okay, are there particular funding, not sources, but funding things that you want, you know, particular projects that you are looking to do in the, you know, in the next couple of years that you're specifically aiming for funding or sort of just a...
We have a, we're in the middle of a bridge project right now, which we did get close to two and a half, 2.3, I believe, million dollars from the state, which we're very grateful for.
Great.
But we have another bridge, which is down on the Mill Street Pond area, which is right near the Franklin line.
Mm-hmm.
That is a, going to be a major, major project, 'cause that's a major road.
Okay.
And we're not quite sure how to tackle that yet, we've been doing patchwork on it, trying to keep it together, there's a little, there's a river literally that goes underneath it, there's a, a factory located right there on the side, which contributes to the problem.
Sure.
Makes it more difficult to work, but that's going to be a huge project.
Okay.
And it's gonna be, we're gonna need to build a temporary bridge, 'cause we can't close that road.
Sure.
It's a major road between Franklin and Norfolk, so...
Right, right.
That's coming up, that's, that's on our urgent list as we speak now, so...
Okay, so urgent meaning within 12 months, within two years?
Within two years, yeah, not 12 months, I mean, it's not gonna fall down, you know, it, you know, eventually it might, but not, not short term, but it, it is something that we're gonna need some help on.
Okay, fantastic.
It's gonna be a big project.
All right, well, I look forward to partnering with you.
We will look forward to that help.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Chapter 90 money, obviously, I know the state's been contributing more every year, and that, that's a good thing, but when you're a rural community like we are, all of our roads are small, they're all narrow, they're all, you know, some people call them cow paths, but, you know, we, we'll never have enough money to fix them all, but we're, we certainly can use all the help we can get on Chapter 90, and of course, education's the top of the list.
Yep, yep, like I said, everybody needs more money for education, everyone needs more money for a trans, Chapter 90, transportation, it's...
You're gonna hear it everywhere you go.
Very consistent need, which, you know, a lot of people said to me when I first started running, they said, "Oh, wow, it's gotta be so different, the needs of all those communities", and, and lo and behold, they really aren't.
It's the same, it's the same list.
All the same list, so, yeah, we, we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, well, we look forward to it, how, how, how should we work contact, you have a, you have a chief of staff on board now?
My staff is not officially hired yet, because I don't get sworn in until January 2nd, but as of January 2nd, they will all officially be hired and we will make sure to get that...
You'll get all the contact information?
Yeah, everyone keeps asking me for business cards, and alas, I don't even know where my office is going to be, let alone what the phone number will be or the email addresses, but as soon as we do have that information, my folks will be disseminating that as widely as we can, please don't hesitate to reach out, we are here for you, and, and please, you know, keep me updated as to how things are going in your town and, you know, what's, what's coming up, you know, I wanna make sure that we have as much open communication as we possibly can.
Okay, and we'd love to have you periodically visit with us.
Great.
And you can help us understand what's going on at your end, too.
Yep, absolutely, it's, it's one of the things you, I, I am, as I've said before, I'm really big on transparency, I think that that's a really important part of just democracy in general, to me, it's not a partisan kind of issue, it's just good governance and good democracy, and part of that is making sure that, that my staff and I, you know, give you the information as to what's going on on our end, and also that, that you folks are, are sharing with us, what's coming up, you know, this particular project, or this issue at this school, we know what, have events in the town, all sorts of things along those lines, so I think that, that that is a really important part of the relationship and the nexus between local and state levels of government, and me personally, and I've been building teams, working on teams, building coalitions most of, since before I knew what the word coalition was, so, so it's a really important part of, of who I am as a person.
Great.
So, I look forward to that.
Your, your energy sounds like it's gonna be a great asset for you.
Thank you very much, I, I get told that a couple of times.
I can imagine, I can imagine, well, that's a good thing, not a bad thing.
Thank you.
It's a good thing.
Thank you, wonderful, do you have...
Kevin, anything?
No, no.
We, we don't wanna keep you long, we were just, it's gracious of you to come and say hello to us, we appreciate that.
Oh, it's my pleasure.
I'm sure you're in demand, and we'll, we'll look forward to working with you, and congratulations, Senator.
Wonderful, thank you so much for having me, you know, I'm, I'm here for you.
We're looking forward to it.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Very, very nice to see you.
Great to see you.
Thanks, thanks for finding our little town.
I, I just got a little confused.
Everyone does.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Room emptied out.
Maybe fence gone.
All right, you're up, Sue.
Okay, so, for tonight's licensing, we are going to be approving or looking to get approval for one taxi license, Norfolk Town Taxi Service, do you want to take them one at a time and vote each kind of general category?
We can do that.
Okay, so, why don't we vote the licensed taxi first?
All right, you wanna be the author of this, Kevin?
I move to approve the taxi license for Norfolk Town Taxi Service.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the liquor licenses, KOB Inc., doing business as Horse and Carriage Restaurant, Novato's Bar and Grill LLC, Eagle Brook Management Corp.
I move to approve the liquor licenses for KOB Incorporated, Novato's Bar and Grill, and Eagle Brook Management Corp.
And Chief Stone said that everything...
All good.
Good, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and next we'll do the retail convenience store for Ann's Market.
I move to approve the retail convenience store license for Ann's Market.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Retail package stores, Les Vos Inc., doing business as Provo Discount Liquors, Norfolk Wine and Spirits Inc., Better Than Soup Inc., doing business as Craft Beer Cellar Norfolk, and Shubham Variety Inc., doing business as Linda's Variety Store, and Sarthy Convenience Inc., doing business as Norfolk Food Mart.
How about just saying approved as red?
You can do that? Why didn't you tell me on the first couple?
Because you were doing so well. It was the expression that made me think of it.
I move to approve the retail package store licenses as red.
It'll be fine. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The general on-premise license is Four Kicks LP.
Move to approve the general on-premise license for Four Kicks.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Common vitrular license for the following, Eagle Brook Saloon, Novato's Bar and Grill LLC, Horse and Carriage Restaurant, Four Kicks LP, Norfolk Town Pizza, Bork's Restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts Inc., 134 Main Street, Center Ice Inc., Aroma Italian Pizza and Roast Beef, Subway, and Dunkin' Donuts at 242 Dedham Street.
I move to approve the common vitrular licenses as red.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna do the Class 1, 2, and 3, we'll start with Class 1 for Cliffs Cycles, MPG Motorsports Inc., LVG Trailers and Equipment LLC.
Move to approve the Class 1 licenses as red.
Second.
And then...
Is, is everything all right on that with Mr. Bullock?
We have one coming in that we waited on for next week, these are all okay with Mr. Bullock, we were waiting for one more that has since been approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to our class auto, Class 2, Auto Clinic, Artesian Motor Group Inc., Mitch's Repair Service Inc., Orlando's Garage, and Carvana LLC.
I move to approve the Class 2 licenses as red.
Second, again, everything's okay there? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, our entertainment license for Eagle Brook Saloon, Norfolk Rink Management, Four Kicks LP, Novato's Bar and Grill.
I move to approve the entertainment licenses as red.
No changes in what's within those licenses?
None.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will have quite a bit of signing when the meeting's over.
Super.
All right, please consider releasing executive session minutes dated October 8th, 2013, and October 22nd, 2013, Town Council has considered these issues to be closed and therefore can be released, is correct?
They have opined to release them.
Thank you very much, do I have a motion to release?
I move to release the executive session minutes dated October 8th, 2013, and October 22nd, 2013.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just, Jim, one more thing so we don't miss it, is the, please consider allowing liquor licensed restaurants to extend the hours of New Year's Eve until 2:00 a.m.
And that's been the practice?
Yes.
Consistent with every year?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I understand from the chief then his annual sting operations, everything went well.
No violations, correct.
No violations, yep, which is the norm, but every now and then, so, that's good news. Okay, screening committee update, my understanding is they've chosen a certain number of people to interview, don't know, I think it's eight, but I don't know that for sure, I do know they're starting the interviews on Thursday, and I, so I'd imagine they're splitting half up on Thursday and half up on the following week, would be my guess, I know they're doing Thursday, I don't know about the following week, so, one of the things that I thought you and I could talk about is if that's the case, you grab your phone and I'll grab my We could very well be in a position to be interviewing finalists between Christmas and New Year's, and I know we, we talked about that, but I was going to see if you would be free, I think we're gonna rule out the 25th and 26th just to be safe, but the 27th?
If I want my keys to work at home, I think that's a good idea.
It's bad when your keys don't work at home.
I think we're both gonna be in that, you, you and I will be interviewing for other jobs, in other towns. So, and I, I wanted to ask your thoughts on this, last time we did this, we interviewed and debated and actually made a decision that evening, I was thinking that perhaps it might not be a bad idea to do the interviews and then take three or four days and then convene again and make our decisions, I'm open to whichever way you have a preference, in seeing if Mr. Palumbo's here, he'll have to defer to your preference.
Yeah, I agree, I think I would prefer to take a couple of days to marinate on what we've heard and what we went over before making a decision, if that makes sense.
All right, so, how about if we shoot for the following Thursday, the 3rd, is that gonna work for you?
Yes, it will.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll target then the 27th, hopefully we can get the candidates in, I mean, that is a variable, and it might be a tough week.
Right.
But as a backup, I'm sure we could get them on the 3rd.
Right.
And then that would give us our regular meeting on the 8th, if the 27th doesn't work. Is that agreeable? So we, if, so we'll either do the interviews on the 27th if they're available with the decision on the 3rd, or if they're not available, we'll do the interviews on the 3rd with the decision on the 8th, does that work?
Very much so.
Okay.
All right, I will fill Scott in so he can get that information.
Terrific. That has gone, I think, quite well, so far, at least as best I know, which is not much, which is what it should be.
How would we ensure that everybody would be available, 'cause I imagine that waiting until we have finalists identified might be too short of notice, is this something that we could, we could ask the committee to share with them upon their interviews to everybody as a blanket statement, just so that it's out there?
I think it's a great idea, yep.
So, I'll, they start Thursday, so I'll speak to Scott tomorrow and ask him to...
We're gonna shoot for the 27th.
Those dates available to them, whatever the final number is.
Whoever they bring forward, whoever they bring forward, we're gonna shoot for the 27th, and with the 3rd as a backup, yeah, that's a good idea. Barring some family commitment where they're traveling or something like that, which is certainly understandable, it's not usually a heavy work week, so, most people should be able to get out as long as it's not family commitments, but family commitments, they are very important, so...
Absolutely.
Okay, good, that, that, that will work well, and if that goes reasonably well, we, we could have somebody on board here by mid-February if we get lucky. Sue, I, to most, I mean, I've talked with most of the department heads over the last couple of days, Friday and today, everyone seems to be okay?
Yeah, you know, everyone's working together to, to, to try to make it work, so, you know.
Todd is sending out the letter on the budget process, so we're gonna start it a little early, 'cause it'll take a little longer, I think, for it to work it through, I've asked Todd to copy me on all the budgets, but I'd like, I've done that every year, if If that's okay with you, if you'd like them as well, be more than happy to do that. I like budgets, you know. You could get to like them, you know, I mean. They're not fun. They're not fun.
I'll get the high-level summary, how about that?
That's the only one that matters, actually. It's the only one that matters. All right. Sue, what else do we have?
We have to approve some minutes.
We do?
Yes.
That is your job, Mr. Calcott.
Sure is. All right, I think I have to do these one by one if memory serves, correct?
You do.
All right, so first, I move to accept the minutes of August 14th, 2018.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I approve the minutes of, I move to approve the minutes of October 30th, 2018.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And finally, I move to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2018.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Sue, thanks, thank Nancy and you, of course, for getting these up to date and out as quickly as we are now, so thank you for that.
They, Kevin is going to be doing quite a bit of reading over the next few weeks.
That's good for him.
But it's great to have some support in the office and get us back up and running.
Absolutely.
We have two other dates that we need to consider. We do have another meeting on December 7th. Normally, this is unusual. We don't usually meet much in December, but on December 17th, we have a 5:00 p.m. meeting. We will have an executive session on Run and Gun. We have two other topics that will be on the agenda as well, one concerning a disclosure from the ZBA. And Sue, remind me of the third item.
Ah, the third item is a Class 3 hearing.
Oh, that's right, yes, thank you. Hopefully, it won't be too long, but we do have that. And then, again, on the 24th, Sue says you're available. 12:00 noon, work for you?
Sure.
This will be a very brief meeting, but we need to sign documentation for that in order to get it into the state in a timely manner to get the reimbursement for the H.L. Day roof repairs.
Yep.
So, we'll need to do that. And then potentially again on the 27th for finals. So, it will be an unusually busy December. I don't really have any recap on town meeting. I think it went well. It's nice when you don't have to engage and everything goes as it should. There was some good debate. Any comments at all?
No.
I met with KP. I don't think I've reported on that. We had a preliminary meeting on the KP budget. Now, I'd like to hear about your road, what to. We divided and conquered that evening. I'm not sure that we got a lot done. It's the meeting that we've been working with the three towns, one member of each board, one finance director and town administrator, minus one. But the school doesn't have a preliminary budget yet. But we have clearly conveyed what we'd like to see happen. They seem at least compatible with that. But we won't know anything until we see their first draft. But I think the process is going to be as, it went well last year. It went horribly the last four years before that, but it went well last year and I would expect it to go well again this year. The superintendent didn't feel that there was anything out there that was unanticipated as of now. But we're all anxious to see what the special ed program is like. They had a number of kids aging out. They have a number graduating, but that's a wild card because you really, you know, you don't know who graduates or doesn't graduate. So, and they could still be on the books. But we will, I think we're scheduling a meeting for January 28th where we'll have the first draft of the meeting. That will be a public meeting, be held on part of the school committee. And that's about it on that, so no real meaningful progress at this point.
Was there any upside that was realized from any of the decisions that were made with, in terms of regional transportation? I thought that there were some increases that were realized during the budget season for the upcoming season? Or was that a mistake?
Well, they, that was an interesting discussion. There are several components to their budget, regional transportation being one, circuit breaker really being the big one. Where when the budget is approved, those numbers aren't finalized.
Right.
And in most instances, those numbers come in higher after the fact. And that was the case last year. And they chose, and I think appropriately so, to use that funding to add, I believe, the late buses, as I believe what they had cut and I believe they added those back. The downside is that now becomes part of the foundation budget that we move forward for the following year. And we also were aware that they were going to put $300,000 of V and D funds, our free, our term for free cash, their term for free cash, once it was certified in October that that would be added. We knew that. That was not a surprise. So, the base budget is higher than it was last year, so we're working off a higher number by default. The circuit breaker is a tough one. It's outside of the budget. Circuit breaker is outside the budget, so, but it could only be used for special ed. They can take part of the circuit breaker funds and build it into the budget at the front end based on, because it's always a year behind. Circuit breaker money is always a year behind. They can use that money from the prior year as part of the budget, and I think last year they put, I think it was $600,000 or $700,000 into the budget. And it's all directly towards special ed. I'm sure they'll do the same thing again this year, but I don't know what that number is. But it was an interesting discussion because it is outside the budget. And sometimes I think that's difficult for people to understand. It belongs outside the budget, honestly, in my opinion. And that was, I think, a result of the ed reform that took place in the 90s. Special ed is a wild card for schools. I mean, people move in, move out all the time. You know, each community has its element of transient families. And so, they have to have funding because they can't, other than that, they called a special town meeting and come back to us and ask for money. So, that, if those funds that come in, in additional monies after the budget's formed, is basically to ensure that. It's basically to make sure that they have funding for unanticipated expenses and they invariably, most years, get them. So, I don't have any discomfort with the way they use it because they've been very consistent in how they've applied that. There were, one town was not comfortable with it and it was an interesting debate. But I think it was more not understanding that it's outside of the budget and that it's very, it's dedicated funds. They can't use it for any other source unless they play, put it into the general budget from the prior year. But other than that, I don't think there are any surprises there.
Great.
I hope. The wild card will be what, how much we get charged and everybody else gets charged. And if you can figure out a wild guess on that, you're a better man than me.
Spin the wheel.
It's pretty close, yeah. I did, I did take a shot at it. I think I might have told you this. I went back and did an analysis on the 10 years and took an average and tried, you know, and said, well, this might be, I'm going to be curious to see. I don't think it's going to.
Yeah.
If it is, it'd be potluck. It'd be potluck. But the good news is, is that we're all in agreement that we're looking for a proposal of 3% on budget this year as opposed to 3% on assessment, which is what the towns, the other two towns pushed for last year. 3% of assessment's about 1.2, 1.3 on budget, which is not going to work. That's a non-starter for schools. Because they're contractual. Oh, that was one piece of information. Their contractual, their estimated contractuals are a little higher this year and it isn't due to the colas. It's due to the lanes and steps. Apparently, they've had a number of teachers move up in lanes. Lanes meaning that they've gotten advanced degrees, masters and what have you. So, they get incremental raises every time they get an additional degree. And apparently, they've had quite a few of those. So, they were anticipating about 3/4 of a percent higher than they normally would be on their salaries. And that's about 60% of their budget. So, we'll see how that all shakes out. But we're all hopeful that their special ed costs will go down. But they've made good movement on insurance. They've done, actually, they did what we did two years ago. So, they're making efforts to try and control those costs and I think they've made a very good effort on those. So, my, from my perspective, having worked with that budget for close to 15 years, I think last year and this year are two of the best years we've had with them. The term transparency, there's pretty good transparency on this. The budget is much better organized, much better structured. You can identify the costs more readily. Prior budgets, while there was integrity in the numbers, it was hard to put the numbers together because they were, you had, you couldn't find one area where you could identify all special ed costs. You really had to go through the 37 pages to find it all. It's much more structured now and so it's more identifiable and easier to look at. And the other thing that we're, we've asked for is an actual to budget, which we've never seen. So, that would, I'd be interested to see, you know, how close they came to actually doing what they planned on. And I'd be shocked if they actually did that because it's a variable. I mean, you, just too many things happen during the course of the year with students in, students out, which is why we vote one number versus each line item. Because they have to move money around back and forth in order to be able to accommodate that. But it'd be curious to see. Other than that, it was a good meeting. I mean, we're all communicating well. Everyone seems to be on the same page and it seems to be more of a positive approach than we've seen in the past. So, I would say it's good news. How was your meeting?
Oh, it was very productive. We had a presentation with some folks from Mastio T. who came down and talked to us about the Complete Streets program. We had the application that's currently in with Rich McCarthy kind of leading the way from the town's perspective on the next steps and how we're progressing through the process. Right now, they're assessing a lot of the feedback they've been getting from the community. And this meeting was meant to kind of bring everybody together who had provided feedback and, you know, be a little bit more open with the kinds of things they're looking for and kind of fit everything into the framework that they're setting forth for us to be able to put these things into action. So, the first part of the meeting, they did a presentation with us, which I believe, or that presentation did come up on the website for anybody who's interested in reviewing the slides or going through it. And they took us through what they've done in other towns and kind of some examples of ways that they can mitigate areas of concern that we brought up, high volume traffic, high speeds, dangerous intersections, things of that nature.
Secconk in Maine, I hope, was on the list.
Absolutely was, yes, it was. They identify that there were about three intersections that came up in a reoccurring fashion during the feedback, but they do have a Wiki map that is up that has been up for quite a while and we thank everybody who's given us feedback on that. There were a plethora of dots placed on that map to give us some direction.
Yeah.
So, they've taken all of that into account and picked out the areas that had the highest frequency of people giving feedback on them. And they're kind of narrowing down that list of the areas that'll make the most impact for our community. That Wiki map is still going to be open through the end of the month, so if anybody else wants to jump on and provide some feedback, it'd be greatly appreciated before we close that down at the new year and then start to move forward with the next steps of the process.
Good, so it was a productive meeting.
Absolutely. There were about 10 residents who showed up, so thank you, everybody who did. We really do appreciate it. And as we move into January, we'll start to get some finalized views as far as where we want to go. We'll get some critical feedback from content experts like Mr. McGee, Mr. Bullock, and kind of direct our way to what projects really need to get done and will have the most benefit to everybody here in town.
Good. I did forget one other thing on the schools. I did meet with the Norfolk superintendent, actually, a couple of times, but one to talk about the budget, but also to talk about the projected growth of the schools. They're coming to our meeting on January 8th, I think. Is that our first meeting? First meeting in January, anyway. The school committee and the superintendent will be coming. I've seen their presentations. I've seen their numbers. We've talked about how one would go about implementing that. Speaking only for me, I'm very supportive of it. I'm sure you have kids in there. I'm sure this whole board has been very supportive of this case. So, we're very supportive of it. What we're working through is the timing of it and how it relates to, it impacts to our debt and things of that nature, and she was very receptive to that. But that'll all be part of the conversation in January because if, we want to try and time this in the way that we lose some obligations because we have the middle school and the high school coming off the books in about five or six years. So, it was a very good meeting. I think they've done a great job in thinking through. They, they've done an exceptional job, I think, on their projections on enrollment, which is always the hardest part. But they have not used the sort of static state numbers that a lot of systems use. They just plug in the 2.1 and all that and they move on. They've looked at actual sales. They've looked at the, you know, there is a transition going from people going from big homes into condos because we have more condos in town now. Well, who goes into the big homes but families with kids? You know, single people don't move into a 3,500 square foot house. Too often. Some may, but rare. So, they've, they've done a good job, I think, in that analysis. They've used actuals as opposed to projections and then, of course, just forecasting that out based on growth. But they'll be in. They're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of a $12 to $14 million project based on timing. I think that probably a fall meeting might be when we take it to the voters to get the initial funding to do the analysis and all of that, which will take another year. That, from a timing and looking at the budget perspective, would work well. That works well for us. Because we, it's important for us to keep our debt ratio in a certain range based on revenues because we don't want to lose that bond rating.
Right.
So, but we had a very good conversation on that, so. They'll come in on January. We'll have a good conversation and finalize what the next steps are. We're all, we're all behind her, all behind them, I should say.
Absolutely.
Yep. And I don't think anything else right now. Sue, did you miss anything?
Nope.
I know we wanted to keep this a light lift, but we've seen we plugged in three more meetings for the month. Why not?
Yes.
Does look like we will get the reimbursement from the state on the H.L. Day School.
That's fantastic.
That's huge. Police station, huge progress, huge. The last three, four weeks have been, it's just, you wonder how it took so long, but I mean, they've really gotten, if you went down there now, it looked, I mean, the walls are done, they're painted, the equipment's going in, the furniture's going in. We're on the home stretch.
Still targeting late January, early February moving?
Still targeting.
Very good.
We need to get together sometime in January, both with the Board of Selectment and the Building Committee to talk about beginning the planning for the fire station. Because we'll have final numbers in January. And we need to figure, there's, there's an interesting debate on how to go forward with that. Not, not from a financial perspective, but which is the right answer?
Yep.
There are some that think that the right answer is to get rid of the middle section and build a whole new middle section versus renovating the middle section. That's the debate. And we're going to need some expertise to help us define that, I think. I mean, the building is back in 54? It's in the 50s, I think, isn't it? Why am I looking at you, Sue? You don't know, do you?
Well, I could look it up.
No, but I think it goes back in the 50s. We know there's this...
I wasn't born then, but I could look it up online.
Thanks for the support. Is there some inference there that I didn't pick up on?
No, no, no.
We know there's, we know there's this festus, the structural wall. We know it needs a completely new heating and ventilation system. That's really expensive to do in an existing building.
Right.
Mr. Bullock's convinced that it would be less costly to just literally level it and build a two-story building, keep the existing bays, add two new bays or three, whichever we feel we need, to the other side, which we have to do anyway. And that land's already been cleared and ready to go.
Right.
So, that'll be the debate. And I, I have no bias. Whichever one works the best.
Yeah.
I don't, it doesn't matter, whichever one works. But we do have funding for it, for those folks that think we don't. We do. So, that, the police station, I would encourage, I think, we'll probably have a grand opening the end of January, I would hope, but I would encourage people, if you get a chance, go down, take a look at it. Anthony, have you been down at all?
Not yet.
You gotta go.